Welcome, Ms. Is Mr. Wadsworth not on today? I don't think, right?
I'll do it. John asked me to.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Abdo.
Ready?
Yes, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Ms. Abdo.
No problem.
Good evening, honorable city council members, honorable elected officials, to our mayor. I know our city treasurer can't join us this evening, but to the all of the administrative staff, our city attorney, and to all of the listening audience. Today is Monday, April 26, 2021, and this is the City of Romulus City Council Regular Meeting. This meeting is being held electronically via the Zoom meeting telecommunication platform. Tonight's meeting ID number is 832-268-36698. This meeting is held pursuant to Public Act 254 of 2020 and the resolution declaring a local state of emergency adopted by city council on March 29, 2021, by Resolution Number 21-093, which permits the remote attendance by members of a public body using telephonic or video conferencing means in certain circumstances, and to allow the public business of the Romulus City Council to be conducted in a manner that permits both the general public and members of the public bodies to participate by electronic means under circumstances allowed by law. Members of the public bodies must further identify specifically by stating the county, city, township, or village and state from which he or she is attending the meeting remotely. Members of the public wishing to participate in this meeting may do so by phone or online from the Zoom meeting application. To join this meeting by phone, call 646-558-8656. When prompted, enter the meeting ID number followed by the pound sign. During the public comment portion of the meeting, the raise hand method will be used to address the city council. Citizens may also submit written comments by email to publiccomment@romulusgov.com before the end of the public comment portion of the meeting. And at this time, we will have roll call. Councilman Barton. Okay, Councilwoman Abdo?
Present.
And please state from which location?
Romulus, Michigan, Wayne County.
Thank you. Councilwoman Roscoe?
Here. Romulus, Michigan, Wayne County, Michigan.
You. Councilwoman Tally?
Here, Romulus, Michigan, Wayne.
Councilman Wadsworth, I don't believe he's here.
I'm going to be here.
Okay, great. Councilwoman Webb?
Romulus, Michigan, Wayne County.
And Councilwoman Williams?
Romulus, Michigan.
Madam Chair, we have a quorum for this meeting.
Thank you, Madam Clerk.
And at this time, the reading of the agenda. Number one, agenda. Number two, minutes. Number three, petitioner. Number four, chairperson's report. Five, mayor's report. Six, clerk's report. Seven, treasurer's report. Eight, public comment. Nine, unfinished business. Ten, new business. Eleven, warrant. Twelve, communication. And number thirteen, adjournment. And a motion being ordered to accept the regular council meeting agenda as presented.
So moved to accept the agenda as presented.
Court.
It's been motioned by Ms. Abdo, supported by Ms. Roscoe, to accept the agenda as presented. Ms. Abdo?
Yes.
Ms. Roscoe?
Yes.
Ms. Webb?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Present.
Chair votes yes. Motion approved.
Number two. To a approval of the minutes from the regular meeting held on April 12, 2021 at 7:30 PM.
So moved for approval of the minutes held at the regular meeting, April 12, 2021.
Support.
It's been motioned by Ms. Abdo, supported by Ms. Webb, to approve the minutes of the April 12, 2021 meeting at seven. Oh, I'm sorry, the special. I'm sorry, I got my notes mixed up. Oh, the minutes, I'm sorry, the minutes of the April 12, 2021 meeting. Ms. Abdo?
Yes.
Ms. Webb?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Ms. Roscoe?
Same.
Chair votes, uh, versus yes. Motion approved.
Agenda item 2B, for approval are the minutes from the special meetings held on April 12, 2021 at 6 o'clock PM to discuss the preliminary 21, 2021, sorry, 21, 22 fiscal year budgets for the court, library, and city.
To the chair, if I may. I'd like to make that motion to approve.
Support.
The motion by Ms. Webb, supported by Ms. Abdo, for the approval of the minutes from the special meeting held on April 12, 2021 at 6 PM to discuss the preliminary 2020, 21, 21 fiscal year budgets for the court, library, and city. Ms. Webb?
Yes.
Ms. Abdo?
Yes.
Ms. Roscoe?
Uh, same.
Okay, Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Chair votes yes. Motion approved.
There are no petitioners on the agenda. That takes us to number four, the chairperson's report.
Okay, so just a couple of quick things, since Mr. Barton isn't here. We didn't have any special meetings or anything today. But I would like to announce that the Romulus High School is their upcoming prom, promtosis upcoming. It will be Wednesday, June 2. In lieu of being in a pandemic, they're doing things a little differently this year. So they are asking people to do, instead of the sponsoring table, as they typically do, they're asking people to sponsor a table. So if you would like to sponsor a table, I do have a contact person. You can let me know, or you can reach out to Nina Burton. She's a class advisor at the high school. You can reach out to her. They need donations in by Monday, May 24 to help with our, help with the promtose. Like I said, they're going to be doing swag bags for the kids as opposed to the sponsoring the table. So if you are interested, please reach out to Nina Burton at the high school. She is the class advisor before Monday, May 24 to assist with, with the donation for the swag bag. And then, oh, Mr. Barton's here.
Yeah.
How you doing?
Wow. I had a, thank you, Ms. Tally, for getting here. I had a, I don't know what happened to the computer. DeShawn, he worked, he walked me through it. And now I'm back.
All right.
Thanks a lot, Ms. Tally.
Absolutely.
Wow.
Through the chair.
Eva and all you guys.
Through the chair, if I may. I need, I have a question for our co-chairperson.
Okay.
Class advisor's phone number, or where we can contact her via phone or email?
You know, let me give, oh, yeah, it is on here. Her number is 734-992-7331.
7331. Thank you.
You, you're more than welcome. Thank you. So, yeah, if we can support that cause, as we know, it's a good, great cause. Please reach out before Monday, May 24. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Tally. Okay, is I'm on now?
Yes, Mr. Barton, we are, we are on the agenda. We're at your report at this time.
Okay, thank you, Madam Clerk. First of all, let me apologize that I couldn't get in. I tried a lot, but DeShawn did a great job of getting me back in. I might have pushed the wrong buttons trying to get in.
Hello?
But at this time, I just want to wish Councilman Wadsworth a happy birthday. And then I want to do a condolences to his sister-in-law, I think, that passed away. So I just want to make that known. Again, there was no study session at 6:30. And thank you, Councilwoman Tally, for filling in through my
Absolutely.
Through my technical difficulties.
You're welcome.
Okay, with that.
Mr. Barton?
Uh, go ahead, Mr. Burcroft.
Yeah, I just wanted to, I didn't know if council wanted to do a memorial resolution for Patricia Arsinalt, which was Jean's sister, Bill Wadsworth's sister-in-law. And then I had one item that you and I spoke out on the phone about the demo list that I wanted to just see if we wanted to update on, please.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I'd like to make that motion that we have a memorial resolution for Patricia Arsinalt with a comment also. When I spoke with Bill today, he wanted me to say, or to let you people know that Patricia loved Romulus. Specifically, she loved the wreck. That's the place she went frequently.
I'll support that motion, Kathy. And I spoke with Bill as well the other day after his, after he returned from the hospital. So my condolences definitely go out to the Wadsworth family. And I'd just like to say I'm glad to see my colleague, Councilwoman, back with us. Welcome back, Celeste. And you know, our prayers are still with you.
Thank you. Appreciate that very much.
And through the chair, through the chair, my condolences as well. And I did speak with Ellen. I think we say we're going to do the same thing, you know, flowers for the family, correct, Ms. Madam Chair, Madam Clerk?
Yes, for, for Councilman Wadsworth and his family, we will send flowers as well. Yes, we will take care of that.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, it's been motioned by Ms. Abdo, supported by Mrs. Webb, for a memorial resolution. Ms. Abdo?
Yes.
Mrs. Webb?
Yes.
Ms. Williams? Ms. Williams?
Yes. Can you hear me?
Tally?
Yes.
Ms. Roscoe?
Yes.
Chair votes yes. Motion approved.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The other item just under your report you called me on was, you know, there was a demolition list with a dwelling to be demoed. And I believe some, at least council, our office received a letter. I didn't know if either Steve Hitchcock or Bob McCray wanted to comment on what we'll try to do to keep a safe situation there. But rather than have a bunch of phone calls, I thought maybe we could just handle it proactively here. So Steve, Bob, I don't know if you want to chime in with that one about the Harrison property.
I can give you a little bit of history on it. This was the subject of a lawsuit that was recently dismissed by the court, and it's been on the demolition list for quite a while. It does have some serious problems with it. And we, I saw the letter that was sent by Mr. Romeo with regards to it. And I know that at this point, it's my understanding, and Bob can correct me if I'm wrong, there's been no applications for any building permits filed with respect to that property. And the individual that he gave us the contract with, I think it was the last time this was on your agenda, and neither one of those, as far as I can tell, have builder's licenses. So we're kind of in the same spot that, yes, this needs to be repaired or torn down. But there is some significant work that needs to be done to repair it, which would require licensed contractors to do that work.
Yeah, you hit the nail right on the head, Steve. Twice he submitted letters with contractors that he had established a contract to make the repairs. Neither time, there was four craft companies involved, and neither time were they licensed contractors through the state of Michigan. So no permits were ever secured. And the house is set vacant and blighted for, since 2005. So it's also lost its non-conforming status. So according to the advice from you on the first one, when they went through the court case, it was dismissed. We proceeded with demolition. And I sent a communication out to council tonight that we're going to go through with all the steps as normal basis for demolition. However, I will not move forward with the final demolition until we've satisfied all requirements here. We've given the go-ahead from our legal counsel.
All right, thanks, guys. Just wanted to give an update to everybody since you all, I'm sure, received a letter on that one. That was it for, for me, Mr. Chairman.
Hey. Thank you, Mr. Mayor Burcroft. Is there any other questions? If not, that completes the chairperson's report.
Chair, I'll make a motion to accept your report.
Support.
It's been motioned by Mrs. Roscoe, supported by Mrs. Tally, to accept, approve the chairperson's report. Ms. Roscoe?
Yes.
Ms. Tally?
Yes.
Ms. Webb?
Yes.
Ms. Abdo?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Chair votes yes. Motion approved. Thank you.
Number five is the mayor's report.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, and to the electeds, all of them and those watching at home. First quote for tonight goes as this, "In life, we never lose friends. We only learn who the true ones are." Thought that was a perfect one. There's a couple birthdays coming up. We said happy birthday, obviously, to Mr. Wadsworth. And very sorry that he's spending it in a, in a visitation at a funeral. Also, we have Ellen, happy birthday. Yours is May 1, so just want to wish you a happy birthday as well.
Thank you.
I do have some action items tonight for council's consideration. First is the item A. This is a recommendation request from Tanya Colfield, our Recreation Department Coordinator. And it's to concur with the administration and authorize a no-fee permit for the Horseshoe Club to use Elmer Johnson Horseshoe Pit Wednesdays starting May 5 of this year through September 30 of this year. The time is 6:30. Just also note that all necessary safety protocols and social distancing requirements will be followed.
Chair, I'll make that motion for a no-fee permit for the Horseshoe Club to use Elmer Johnson's Horseshoe Pit on Wednesday, starting May 5 through September 30, 2021, at 6:30 PM.
Support.
It's been motioned by Mrs. Roscoe, supported by Ms. Tally. This is for a request for a no-fee permit, Horseshoe Club. Any discussion? Here is no discussion. Roll call vote. Ms. Roscoe?
Yes.
Ms. Tally?
Yes.
Ms. Webb?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Ms. Abdo?
Yes.
Chair votes yes. Motion approved.
Thank you, council. Item B for next action to consider is also a request from Tanya Colfield and Gary Harris, Purchasing Director. This one's to concur the administration and consent to piggyback on MyDeal Contract 00861. That's to update and renovate the restrooms at Elmer Johnson Park. The amount is $37,000. Funds have been verified and available out of the general fund capital outlay.
To the chair, if I may.
Go ahead, Ms. Webb.
I'd like to make that motion to concur with the administration and consent to the contract for renovation. And I have a comment.
Okay.
Support.
Support by Ms. Tally. It's been motioned by Ms. Webb, supported by Ms. Tally, for piggyback on MyDeal, Allied Building Services of Detroit, Elmer Johnson's restroom renovation. And we had a comment from Mrs. Webb.
Yes, I'd like to thank Tanya and also Maria Ferris for breaking this down to the council on the dollar amounts in regards to the piggyback contract we have from Allied Services, which was $10,571, and then into the budget year, $26,429. So I'd like to thank them for breaking that down for us.
Thank you, Ms. Webb. Any other discussion?
I have a comment.
Yes, go ahead, Ms. Roscoe.
Um, looking at the start date and the completion date, which is looking like the whole summer. So my question is, as while those restrooms are out of commission, there'll be porta potties or something else placed out there for use, I would imagine? Okay, it just, it just was a long span there for them to renovate those restrooms.
And the great thing at the end, they'll be much improved. Those restrooms, or I don't know from what year, but they were also difficult come wintertime for winterizing. So I think everybody will be happy at the end.
And I was sure that was the case. I just wanted to put it out there so the public knew that there would
Sure.
be other avenues.
Good. Thank you, Ms. Roscoe. If there's no other comments, I'm going to go to a roll call vote. Ms. Webb?
Yes.
Ms. Tally?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Ms. Abdo?
Yes.
Ms. Roscoe?
Yes.
Chair votes yes. Motion approved.
Thank you, council. The next request is a recommendation from Roberto Scapatici, our DPW director. This one's to concur with the administration, authorize the attached change orders, number one and two. Total amount $172,709.00 to ITB 19/20-25 for all the work outlined in Change Order Number One. Reduced the grout joints and increase full-length liners for the amount of $87,709. Change Order Two is to clean up grease and buildup on Beverly sewer due to SNF Foods, which is a company in that area. The city will be requesting reimbursement from SNF Foods for the entire cost. The amount is $85,000. Those funds are budgeted and available out of the construction progress account listed.
To the chair?
Yes, Ms. Tally?
I'd like to make that motion, and then I had a question, too. But to concur with the administration and authorize the attached change orders, number one and number two. Total amount of $172,709 to ITB 19/20-25 for all work outlined in Change Order Number One, to reduce grouting joints and increase full-length liners in the amount of $87,709. And Change Order Number Two, for the cleanup of grease buildup in the Beverly sewer due to the SNF Foods production. The city will be requesting reimbursement from SNF Foods for the entire cost in the amount of $85,000.
Got to get a support.
Support.
It's been motioned by Ms. Tally, supported by Ms. Abdo, for IB, ITB 20/20-25, 2020 sanitary sewer repairs. Change orders, number one, and number two, for additional work. Any discussion?
Yeah, to the chair, just a question. The change, so SNF, we're looking at them both, but both change, they're going to take care of both change orders? Is that what we're saying for both?
Roberto, you're on. Do you want to answer that, please?
Yes, um, yeah, so there's two change orders. The total amount is $172,000 and some change.
Right.
Change order was very specific because if, if the SNF Foods can test payment, then we wanted to keep it separate and be transparent with what's happening with that sewer out there. But it, it's two different change orders for separate amounts. And, and yes, it totals about $172,000.
And so we're saying SNF is responsible for the whole thing?
SNF is only responsible for up to $85,000. So just to give a little bit more history, these folks moved in maybe about five, six years ago, and we didn't know the impact of their effluent on the sanitary sewer system. So we made them sign into an agreement that if they didn't control their fats, oils, and greases, they would be responsible for cleanup because we didn't want to put it on our residents.
So that's Change Order Number Two. So Change Order Number One, is that related to SNF?
No, that's, that's our residential sewers. That's our neighborhoods. So when we took our video in our televising and cleaning of our lines, we felt that there was a better product we could do with that system before we had televised it. So that's the increasing cost. So instead of grouting lines, which grouting can kind of get a little bit out of control, you start going to every single joint, then we opted to just line the sewer, be done with it, give our residents basically a new sewer, and move on to our, our next project.
Okay, so I guess my question for the Change Order Number One, was it foreseeable?
Uh, not necessarily.
Okay, okay.
Yeah.
All righty, thank you.
Yep, thank you. Any other discussion? If there's no other discussion, we go call, roll call vote. Ms. Tally?
Yes.
Ms. Abdo?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Ms. Webb?
Yes.
Ms. Roscoe?
Yes.
Chair votes yes. The motion is approved.
Thank you, council. The next is also a recommendation from Roberto Scapatici and Stephen Hitchcock, legal counsel. This one's to authorize the mayor and clerk to enter into the attached contract with the state of Michigan, MDOT, for the Beverly Road Phase Two project with a 20% local match of $291,000. The state of Michigan has awarded the city of Romulus $1,312,100. Those funds have been confirmed and available out of capital outlay, major road account listed.
To the chair, if I may?
Go ahead, Ms. Webb.
I'd like to make that motion to authorize the mayor and the clerk to enter into the attached contract with the state of Michigan, MDOT, for the Beverly Road Phase Two project.
Support.
It's been motioned by Mrs. Webb, supported by Mrs. Tally, for the Beverly Road Phase Two State of Michigan contract agreement. Any discussion? Here is no discussion. We're going to have a roll call vote. Ms. Webb?
Yes.
Ms. Tally?
Yes.
Ms. Roscoe?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Ms. Abdo?
Yes.
Chair votes yes. Motion approved.
Thank you, council. The next couple are budget amendments. The first one is to concur with the administration, introduce Budget Amendment 20/21-20. That's to pay for the final construction cost of the Goddard Road streetscape. The original award was 19/20-11, was approved at the council meeting on December 9 of 19. Funds were not dispersed for payment to the state of Michigan, MDOT. The amount of the amendment is $100,700.
Need a motion?
Mr. Chair?
Yes, and Ms. Abdo?
I'll make that motion that we concur with the administration and pay the Budget Amendment 20/21-21 to pay for the costs associated with the repair to the Pinewood Pump Station Number One.
Support.
Been motioned by Ms. Abdo, supported by Mrs. Tally, for introduction of Budget Amendment 20/21-20, major roads. Any discussion? Any discussion?
Yes, John.
Oh, go ahead.
Yes, I just want to make sure. I didn't see it in the notes. Because it wasn't paid in 2019, did the state, did we incur any interest on that late payment?
Don't believe so. Roberto, do you have an answer on that one, your cap?
Uh, no, actually, quite the inverse. We, we gained interest in our own money. There was no additional funding tacked on. It's the exact, the exact amount that was submitted in 2019.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. If there's no other discussion, roll call vote. Ms. Abdo?
Yes.
Mrs. Tally?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Ms. Webb?
Yes.
Ms. Roscoe?
Yes.
Chair votes yes. Motion approved.
Thank you, council. Last one's also a budget amendment. This one is to concur with the administration, introduce Budget Amendment 20/21-21 to pay the costs associated with the Pinewood Pump Station for rail and base replacement. The amount was $5,000.
Chair, I'll make that motion for introduction of Budget Amendment 20/21-20 for the repair of the Pinewood Pump Station Number One.
Support.
Okay.
It's motioned by Mrs. Roscoe, supported by Ms. Abdo, for introduction of Budget Amendment 20/21-21. Any discussion, Ms. Abdo?
Yes, to the chair, if I may. I'd like to ask, I see, I believe Kathy is on the line.
Okay.
The first sentence states that the DPW is requesting this budget amendment and to cover some of the needed repairs of the Pinewood SAD detention system. Kathy, does that mean that you're coming back to the council for some more additional monies for repairs? Are there other repairs? It says for some, this $5,000 is going to cover some of the repairs.
Kathy, Roberto, you want to respond to that one?
Yeah, Mayor, I'll respond to that. So Councilwoman Webb, there's three pumps in that station. Yeah, Mayor, I'll respond to that. Um, so Councilwoman Webb, um, there's three pumps in that station and this is just one of them. I can't foresee if we have a breakdown in another one. Uh, this just happens to be one of the smaller pumps right now.
Okay, because I think we did have repairs on one of those pumps years, a few years back. So I'm just asking that question.
They're constantly under repair. Uh, we don't prefer to have storm pump stations. They don't get used very often. The pumps sit. And it seems like something's always going wrong with them.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Webb. Is there any other discussion? Hearing none, roll call vote. Ms. Roscoe?
Yes.
Ms. Abdo?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Ms. Tally?
Yes.
Ms. Webb?
Yes.
She have votes? Yes, motion approved.
Thank you, counsel. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Mayor.
Next on the agenda is the clerk's report. And good evening, counsel. Um, I have two items, but before I ask you to take action on those items. I have a few announcements concerning the upcoming May fourth election. Um, first, as you know, Tuesday, May fourth, there is a special election, special school election. Um, the, uh, asking voters to vote on an operating millage. Um, just wanna announce some extended hours here in the clerk's office, um, concerning absentee ballot voting. Um, this Friday, April the thirtieth, um. This will be the last day for voters to request a ballot by mail, for us to mail a ballot, um, to voters. Uh, we will be open until five o'clock on Friday. Um, so, um, if you want us to mail your ballot to you. Um, the deadline is, uh, this Friday, April the thirtieth. And then on May first, the clerk's office will be open from eight to four o'clock. And voters wishing to, um, request an absentee ballot may do so, but you must come in person. Um, you'll be able to take the ballot home with you, or you can vote it here in the clerk's office. Uh, you must, uh, present photo ID. And then on Monday, May the third, that is the last day for a voter to acquire an absentee ballot. The voter must vote the ballot here in the clerk's office. You will not be able to take the ballot home with you. Um, and again, you must present photo ID. Um, with regards to the polling locations, um, I just, I had confirmation today that students will be returning to the classrooms. Uh, on May the third. Um, so on election day, students will be, um, in the building. And so that's gonna alter some of the entrances to the, uh, polling locations. Um, for polling locations located at Hill Creek and Barth Elementary. Um, you will be entering the gym or the poll, the precinct from the, um, side doors and the back entrances. And then for, uh, the middle school, you'll be entering through the back entrance, uh, to access the gym. And that's that entrance that's near, um, the football field. Um, if you have any questions, give us a call. We just got confirmation today, so we will get that information on, um, our city website. Um, and also on the website, we do have a, a copy of the sample ballot. Um, so if anybody's interested to see what's on the ballot, we have one thing on the ballot. Um, um, you can a- a- access an apps, uh, I'm sorry, a sample ballot from our website. And with that, and if, again, if you have any questions concerning the election, um, please give us a call. Miss Brad? Yes.
I just wanted to mention to the listening audience that this is not a homestead tax. It's not, that this is a, uh, renewal of a tax on businesses. To help support the schools.
Thank you, Ms. Abdo. That's real important. Um, and with also, I wanna mention for the residents who live in the Woodhaven-Brownstown School District. Um, there will also be, uh, a millage proposal, actually it's a bond proposal on the ballot, uh, for those residents. So that's precinct four over at Hill Creek. So there will be two ballot styles there. Uh, one for Romulus Community Schools and then one for the, uh, Woodhaven-Brownstown Community School District. Thank you. Um, if there are no more questions regarding the election, um, then I have two action items that. Like you all to take action on, and we're gonna start at, uh, six A. And for second reading. And final adoption is budget amendment twenty slash twenty-one dash nineteen in the amount of seventeen thousand, five hundred dollars. This is regarding the City of Romulus Retiree Healthcare Plan as of June thirtieth, twenty twenty. This budget amendment was introduced at the regular council meeting held on April twelfth, twenty twenty-one.
Need a motion?
I'll make that motion for second reading and final adoption of the budget amendment twenty slash twenty-one dash nineteen in the amount of seventeen thousand, five hundred dollars. For the preparation of the actual, actuarial funding valuation of the City of Romulus Retiree Healthcare Plan.
Support.
As of June. Thank you.
It's been motioned by Mrs. Abdo, supported by Mrs. Webb. For second reading and final adoption of budget amendment twenty slash twenty-one dash nineteen. Any discussion? Hearing no discussion, roll call vote. Ms. Abdo?
Yes.
Ms. Webb?
Yes.
Ms. Tally?
Yes.
Ms. Roscoe?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
She have votes? Yes, motion approved.
Thank you. And the last action item under my report is six B. And for second reading and final adoption is an amendment to the City Code of Ordinances, uh, chapter thirty, article two, section thirty dash twenty-five. Procedures for issuance of certificate of registration. This ordinance amendment was introduced at the regular council meeting held April twelfth, twenty twenty-one.
Need a motion?
Mister Chair, I'll make that motion.
Okay.
For second reading and final adoption of amendment to City Code of Ordinance, chapter thirty. Article two, section thirty dash twenty-five, procedures of assurance of certificate of registration.
Support.
It's been motioned by. Mrs. Roscoe, who's second, I'm sorry.
Abdo.
Ms. Abdo? And this is the second reading and final adoption of amendment to the City Cor- Code of Ordinance, chapter thirty. Article two, section thirty, dash twenty-five, procedures for issuing a certificate of registration. Any discussion? Hearing no discussion, roll call vote. Ms. Roscoe?
Yes.
Ms. Abdo?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Ms. Tally?
Yes.
Ms. Webb?
Yes.
She have votes? Yes, motion approved.
Thank you, counsel. That takes us to number seven, the treasurer's report. And again, our city treasurer, uh, wasn't able to join the meeting this evening. Number eight, thank you. Number eight is public comment, and this is the portion. Of the meeting for those members of the public wishing to address city council. The raise hand method will be used to identify those wishing to speak. If you've joined the meeting online, use the raise hand icon from the meeting app. Tap the microphone icon to unmute yourself when you've been acknowledged. If you've dialed in from a touchstone phone, press star nine from your phone to raise your hand. And press star six from your phone to unmute yourself when acknowledged. And again, uh, you must press star six to mute yourself when finished. After you've been acknowledged, please state your name for the record. You will have three minutes to speak. Upon expiration of your three minutes, you will be muted. Additional time will be upon the approval of the chairperson. So if you need additional time beyond your three minutes, again, you will have to, uh, have approval from the chairperson. Otherwise, after your three minutes have expired, uh, we will, you will be muted. As a reminder, as a reminder, citizens may also submit written comments by email to publiccomment@romulusgov.com. Before the end of the co- public comment portion of the meeting. And again, if there's anyone wishing to speak from the general audience, at this time, you may, um, indicate. So by using the ra- raised hand feature. And I do not see any raised hands, Mister Chair.
Okay, Madam Clerk, close that part out.
Okay. Next on the agenda is unfinished business, number nine. Number ten, new business. Is there any new business from council? All right. Number eleven for approval is warrant twenty-one dash eight for checks presented in the amount of seven hundred and seventy-nine thousand, nine hundred and sixty-one dollars and sixty-four cents.
Mister Chair?
Yes, I'll call Ms. Abdo.
Okay, um, I make the motion that we pay warrant twenty-one dash eight in the following amounts. General fund, seventy-four thousand, eight hundred and forty-four dollars and seventy cents. Major street fund, one thousand, nineteen dollars and seventy-five cents. Local street fund, one thousand, five hundred, three dollars and ninety cents. Public safety fund, twenty-one thousand, one hundred and eighty-one dollars and seventy-six cents. Cable TV, one hundred and ninety-two dollars and sixty-four cents. Merriman Road Special Assessment, two hundred and twenty-nine dollars and thirteen cents. Oakwood Sad, ninety dollars and seventy-eight cents. Garbage and rubbish collection fund, two thousand, four hundred and seventeen dollars and twenty-five cents. Uh, nine-eleven service fund, seven hundred and twenty-nine dollars and fifty-eight cents. NARC forfeiture state, one thousand, thirty-eight dollars and forty-nine cents. Library fund, eight thousand, five hundred and twenty-three dollars and nine cents. DDA, nineteen thousand, eight hundred and twenty-six dollars and eighty-nine cents. Tifa District Two, one thousand, six hundred and eighty-seven dollars and fifty-eight cents. Binding Road Extension, E-course Construction, four hundred and fifty dollars. Water and Sewer Fund, two hundred and ninety-seven thousand, two hundred and ninety-three dollars and seventy-eight cents. Motor Vehicle, thirteen thousand, two hundred and ninety-seven dollars and sixty-two cents. Technology Services, thirteen thousand, eight hundred and twenty dollars and thirty-one cents. Retiree Insurance Benefits, sixty thousand, one hundred and seventy-one dollars and thirty-five cents. Revolving Fund, five hundred and eighty-eight dollars. Delinquent Personal Property Fund, one hundred and thirty-six thousand, four hundred and four dollars and eighty cents. Payroll Fund, one hundred and twenty-four dollars, six hundred and fifty dollars and twenty-four cents. Totalling all funds, seven hundred and seventy-nine thousand, nine hundred and sixty-one dollars and sixty-four cents.
Support.
It's been motioned by Ms. Abdo, supported by Ms. Tally. To pay warrant number twenty-one dash eight for seven hundred and seventy-nine thousand, nine hundred and sixty-one dollars and sixty-four cents. Any discussion?
Yes, John.
Yes, go ahead, Officer.
Yes, I have, um, up under check number seven-four-nine-two-five. It's a DTE bill. And I, and I watch these bills because, I mean, I know the, the, uh, utility bills are high. But I'm just noticing with the city, they're pretty high. Like this one up under seventy-four-nine-two-five is nine thousand, five hundred. And ninety-five dollars, but then you have another one up under seventy-four-nine-two-six for nine thousand, five hundred, seventy-four dollars and sixty-nine cents. So. And, and that's up under the city hall. So is the city hall covering the library, the court and the city hall? For this nine thousand, five hundred, seventy-four dollars? Because the one up under seven-four-nine-two-five, it lists, and I appreciate that, Maria, it lists all the buildings that sits covered. But up under the seventy-four-nine-two-six, it only says Wayne Road, one-one-one-one-one, Wayne Road, City Hall. So what buildings is that nine thousand cover? Do anybody have that?
I don't know if there's a quick answer from anybody on the call from finance. If not, we can get you an answer on that.
Okay, and, and, and also, it doesn't give the addresses for the gas bill, which is eight thousand, nine hundred and ten dollars. I, I'm just really concerned that the utility bills within our city is, is pretty high and maybe, as I said before, we need to dial down. Because, um, that's pretty high on a regular basis for these type of, uh, utility bills. And I know, uh, Maria, uh, listed the ones for the first one that, uh, the nine thousand, five ninety-five. But on the second one, it wasn't listed and neither on the gas bill was it listed for what building. So I, I was just concerned about that and, um, I would love for her to, uh, you know, give me an idea of what we're covering. Because, uh, with everything else, um, just like every resident, we have to cut back. And I, I think the city needs to do some dialing back if the utilities are gonna be continually running at high every month. Thank you.
Thank you. Mister Chairman, I'll also note that any, any council people that have questions on the warrant, if you call us during the day, we can usually bring up that information in the system and give that. So absolutely, uh, all the bills are important and we're trying to make sure we're on all of them. So just an invite to any council people, if you have questions on that warrant that you get the pack at the end of the week, call us, uh. Uh, you know, over the weekend, email or call us that Monday and we'll get those answers right away. Thank you.
It's even better. And the reason a lot of times I say it at the council meeting because there's residents calling me with the same concern. So when I get the answer, they get the answer. And that's the issue. It's not trying to, uh, you know, create a problem. But residents have questions, they see the, the council pack and then they wanna know why it's, so I ask the question during the council meeting. Uh, so they can get the same answer I get. Thank you.
Sure. My point was that we're here both for council and for residents, so please call us. If we can answer any of your questions on a warrant ahead of time, we'll be happy to do it. Thank you.
Okay. Is there any more discussion? If there's no more discussion, a roll call vote. Ms. Abdo?
Yes.
Mrs. Tally?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Ms. Roscoe?
Yes.
Ms. Webb?
Yes.
She have votes? Yes, that motion is approved.
Number twelve is communication.
Uh, Ms. Abdo, I think I see your hand.
Thank you. I wanted to announce that Ms. Sandy Tanny and I are working with the senior class advisors. On a program to sponsor a kid to prom. Basically, we've, we've been out in the community and we've been approaching people in the community. As well as some of the businesses to see if they would buy a prom ticket for someone to go to prom. Uh, so we've, we've had a little bit of luck so far. Their prom this year is being held outside. It's going to be socially distanced as much as possible in an outdoor facility. They will have dinner and pretty much, they're trying to make it as normal as they can during a pandemic. But if there is anyone in the community who would like to sponsor a student to prom, please contact me and I will let you know how to do it. And, um, we plan to give the money we've collected to the senior class advisors on May second. Uh, so that that gives them time to tell these kids they're getting a free prom ticket. And they will acknowledge any of the people that are donating on their programs for their, at prom, they will have a program that, you know, acknowledges the donors. So please contact me if you're interested. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Abdo.
I have something.
Yes. Mrs. Tally?
Roscoe.
Ms. Roscoe? Go ahead, Ms. Roscoe.
Um, well, first of all, I want to announce that we have a community short day coming up on May fifteenth. And, uh, it will be in the complex at City Hall there at one-one-one-one Wayne Road. Um, it's gonna be a drive-through event. You're only allowed two boxes of paper products. Um, like a fifteen by twelve inch box. And you can pull up and they'll be staffed there to help get your boxes out. You don't even need to get out of your car. And they'll shred the papers for you and, and give you back your boxes. But anyways, that is May fifteenth. It's only for three hours from nine o'clock to twelve o'clock. And again, that is at the City Hall complex there on Wayne Road. And, uh, if you have any other questions, you can call seven-three-four-nine-five-five-four-five-four. Zero. So, um, you know, get your papers together. It's always good to have all that stuff shredded. Um, the other thing I'd like to say on a personal note, just like, thank everyone out there for all their thoughts and prayers during this, uh, time that I lost my dad. Uh, all your, uh, cards and flowers and phone calls and prayers have been, uh. More support, more strength for me than you could possibly know. And I just wanna say a great big thank you. Uh, words aren't enough, but thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Roscoe.
Is there anybody else?
Yeah, to the chair?
Yes, uh.
Yes, again, um the reminder about the prom toast that's coming up, just if we can support our, that please do. But um I'm also going to take a page from our mayor's playbook. Um I like to read a quote, rather scripture, and it comes from Proverbs twelve twenty-two. Lion lips are an abomination to the Lord, but those who deal truthfully are his delight. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Tally.
I believe uh Councilwoman Williams has her hand up, Mr. Chair.
Yes, I do, and I know, I should have said this to Roberto since residents are um, they have a a really uh deep concern that it's so much construction going on on Codswell, on Wick Road, but Tyler Road. They're wondering, uh when will this be finished? Because they're uh they're struggling to go all the way around to get into Belleville to uh go shopping. So uh that's actually for Roberto, I should have asked him that question, if he can get back with me on the answer. I know Great Lake Water Authority is doing a lot of work, but they have so many roads tore up at the same time where it's uh, it's really causing uh an issue with the residents being able to uh maneuver their way around and get to um, to uh to Belleville, to whatever shopping uh centers they would like to go to. And um I I I um would like to ask for a resolution for uh Pastor David Jones. He passed away this weekend. It's a Patty Stewart's brother, so if the uh council can support doing a resolution for him. And also, I haven't told you.
We supported that.
Eva.
Eva. It's been motioned by Ms. Williams, supported by Ms. Webb, for memorial resolution for David Jones Junior. Discussion. If there's no discussion, I would like to say something. Uh David Jones Junior lives across the street from me. We've been neighbors for years. This man used to go down when heavy snow was blocking everybody's driveway. He would take his snow blower and do everybody's driveway and sidewalk on our street, on Michael. When I lost my family members, he came over to my house. He brought food, he brought water, he came to the funeral. Ms. Webb and 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 Ms. Tally, you were there when you he spoke at my son's funeral. David Jones was a man that cared about his community and loved his people. He's going to be sorely missed. I really miss one of the best neighbors I ever had. It hurts me so bad when I seen the ambulance come out his house and pick him up, and I knew it was some trouble. So keep his family in prayers. Do that, please, for a man that's a man of the cloth. Thank you. Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Ms. Webb?
Yes.
Ms. Tally?
Yes.
Ms. Roscoe?
Yes.
Ms. Abdo?
Yes.
She have votes yes, motion approved.
I have one more thing. I I I found it uh very interesting of the comment uh or the quote that uh Councilwoman Tally said. Um I was reading the letter that the mayor sent out pertaining to uh the end of his uh mayorship, and I would just like to say this to the residents. I was there. I said, I watched. A lot of the council members that sit here now, sit and watch, and they knew what was going on at the police department and chose to say absolutely nothing. Now, I went to every last, and I'm saying this to the residents, so we don't have no confusion in the message that's sent out. I went to every last one of those hearings with every last one of those police officers or undercover officers, the former chief and his wife. The former mayor name was not mentioned. So I I I I take it to be very disturbing to spit out something that's not true. When someone is not charged, when someone was not charged, their name was clear. Don't make it seem like that back in two thousand thirteen, two thousand twelve, two thousand thirteen, that someone was charged with something that they wasn't. That statement in there, wonderful statement on Mr. Mayor uh of the city, but it shouldn't be things being said because whether you like a person or not. And if it's not true, just hold it. Don't say it, because that statement, the mayor, Mr. Biden, uh several council members that's on this council today witnessed everything that was going on and didn't say nothing. So if you did say nothing now, it's just best to let it go. God has it all in control, and uh I just had to say that because so many people called me about that, and that statement is so very misleading. And um that's just how I feel, whether anybody agree or not. I have documents showing the facts. So um I just wanted that to be known. We moved on. Mayor Berkoff has took us to a different level, so let's just deal with the level we on versus what happened in thirteen, because as I said, if you didn't say nothing in thirteen or nine through thirteen, there shouldn't be uh a conversation, especially putting it in the letter and sending it out and it took to the community, because I don't know who the mayor sent this to, but even residents ended up with it. Other mayors in other cities end up with it. That's that's just not, that's not the business. Thank you.
To the, to the chair?
Yes, I'll go ahead, uh Ms. Tally.
I do want to do another announcement. I'm sorry, I don't like to come back, but I just got to notice that there's going to be free dumping days for Romulus residents, May twentieth, twenty-first, and twenty-second, uh Thursday and Friday from eight thirty AM to three PM, and Saturday, eight thirty AM to two PM. Uh Romulus DPW, the South Lot at one two six hundred Wayne Road. Um and then you can dispose dispose of three, uh I'm sorry, dispose of large quantities of items and up to three bulk items per household. No commercial waste, non-hazardous material only, proof of resident, ref- residency is required. Um please contact seven three four nine four two seven five seven nine for the free dumping days for Romulus residents. Thank you.
Ms. Tally, can you tell them to come and and get the stuff out of my basement?
Call them at seven three four nine four two seven five seven nine.
All right, Ms. All right, Ms. Webb, quit laughing at me.
Sorry.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman?
Yeah, go ahead, uh, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, I just want to respond, since I was mentioned by name about a letter that went out. First off, there was an internal letter that went out to employees and some boards and commissions, not outside our community. I think it's pretty ironic that people are taking offense when I didn't mention any names in that. And so the comments that I made were reflective and professional. Uh and as far as my responsibility on council, um I was the council's liaison to the Michigan State Police, so I did voice my concerns, and uh it's it's in their record, so I'll leave it at that. Thank you.
Okay, all right, uh go ahead, uh.
May not do this.
Go ahead, uh. Miss, Miss uh, Madam Clerk?
Okay, are we, are we done with communication? Okay, then. That takes, that takes us to um number thirteen, which is adjournment, and the time is eight twenty-nine.
So moved.
Support.
It's been motioned by Mrs. Webb, supported by Ms. Abdo?
Yep.
For adjournment. Ms. Webb?
Yes.
Ms. Abdo?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Ms. Roscoe?
Yes.
Ms. Tally?
Yes.
She have votes yes? Motion approved, and thank you for the five three. Thank you. Bye-bye.
Bye.
Good night, everyone.